A August 16th Board of Supervisors special call meeting. If everyone will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. All right. I get a motion for adoption of the agenda. I'd appreciate it.
I'll second a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll go into the public comment period. Anyone in the courtroom that would like to speak, please come up and give us your district and your name, and we can start in the courtroom first, and then we have a couple of people online that might want to as well. All right, not seeing anyone in the courtroom. Oh, is Mark coming? I thought he was going to sit by. Sorry, Mark.
This is Mark Anderson from the Pembott District. I forgot last time I spoke publicly to put in a plug for the Facebook Rappahannock broadband site. Now has over 200 members, including me. I regard it as the brain trust of the county for broadband information. There's a lot of good ideas on there. Some are a little goofy, but it's probably worth your time to read through it if you do Facebook at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Are you a paid spokesman now?
Not paid.
Anyone else? Thank you. I see we have a few people on Zoom. If you would like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand.
Is that a term now?
It tends to work.
Zoom hand?
The Zoom hand.
What does it look like? It's digital.
It's a hand.
Actually, I think you can change the color of your Zoom hand to your preference. I do want to note, I did have a conversation with Ms. Wood earlier today, and she asked when, if she wanted to speak on behalf of the Water and Sewer Authority, should it be public comment? I told her I thought the conversation might be informal, and she probably had an opportunity to talk during the agenda item on the Rescue Plan Act, but I can't speak for the board, so I don't want to cause her to miss her opportunity and leave that to the board.
I think it should be within that context.
Yep, I agree. All right, seeing no hands on Zoom, I will close the public comment period, and we move into item number two, which is American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds.
Sizzle Frif, is that how you pronounce the acronym?
I think most places you see the acronym, they don't include the leading C, although I'm not sure that's all that important. I want to first state that during your last regular meeting, there was a discussion trying to figure out when the right time would be to hold a meeting to talk about these funds, and that just, I think there were a lot of inputs, and part of that, I suggested that you may want to do it, might want to do it before the September 14th ARPA deadline, or a body deadline. And there was also an interest to have an outreach to the community to allow individuals who may have participated in CARES and other programs to express their need, and I want to very plainly say that that hasn't happened, and so those people are not necessarily here, and we will, you will want to do that still going forward. I felt uncomfortable having not had the opportunity to dig deeply into the what is allowed and not allowed, what's eligible, and what I didn't want to do is suggest to people that there's money available if there may not be. So I'm more comfortable now, but I do believe you will want to have another work session type meeting where we more directly, I more directly notify those different groups that may have had the opportunity to get funds last time to express to you how important it is for them this time. I don't know the best way to try to walk the board through some of the opportunities. The interim final rule is linked, and it's not a very readable document, but also linked is a document prepared by the National Association of Counties, which I think is a pretty good digest and analysis, hitting the high points of the program, what's eligible, what's not eligible, and that's what's eligible and not eligible right now, based on the interim final rule. Comments were all submitted into the feds, and we will expect a final rule at some point in time, perhaps incorporating some of those comments and changing some of the guidelines and eligibilities, maybe expanding, maybe contracting, we don't totally know right now. The same process happened during the CARES Act, and it was well into the process before the final rules were established, and we proceeded a long way under interim rules. So I don't want to scare the board from taking action or making decisions, but just let you know, hopefully, things will be more clear and loosen up. For example, the revenue loss requirements, there's a lot of interest in localities of having some of those deadlines shifted to align with most communities fiscal years, and right now it's very cumbersome because the annual periods between which a locality would have to identify their pre-pandemic revenue and then a growth at 4.1% don't align with our fiscal year, which makes it very much a pain to produce that data and analyze it, and probably makes it not worth the effort. There was a lot of comments on that, and I'm sure there were a lot of comments on the broadband package and what speeds were required, or what you could do now, and what the wording means by being ready to scale to 100 by 100 if you put 100 by 20 in now. So I leave with that. Maybe the best way to go through this, and I didn't print it for you, but it is attached and available for the public, is to look at this NACO document. Before we do that, I pause for board input. And for those following online, the link is in Board Docs, but also very useful, right on the first page of this NACO link, there is a downloadable printable PDF, and I would recommend take advantage of that, so you can have it in front of you and mark it up and highlight it, and it tracks the version, HTML version, online. I've already spoken about the timeline for these funds, but the most critical timeline is December 31, 2024. Funds need to be obligated by that time, which means you have to have signed a purchase order or committed the funds to be used for a particular purpose by that date, but they don't have to be expended until two years after that. So, for example, if there was a large capital project, as long as you entered in that contract for that capital project before December 31, 2024, it could progress over the following two years, and your payments would be made out during that construction process over those next two years. So there is a fair amount of time, and there are some standardized reports, and having received less than $5 million and having less than 200,000 people, we have the easiest route for reporting, but there's still plenty of reporting that we'll have to do. I think I'm going to plow down to the details on the eligible expenses, which start on, if you're in the PDF, on page five. But there are several categories broken out, and, like I said, this could change. But the first is Support Public Health Response. In many counties that have, are the home of the health department in other states, I think there's probably more in this category for those type of communities than ours. Vaccination programs, testing, monitoring, all of those sorts of things. This section, I think, is not very useful to us, except there is the opportunity to improve ventilation for congregate settings in other public facilities. So that may be an opportunity to use funds for HVAC where we think we may need significant improves in HVAC, and I imagine some of these rules will also apply to some of the funding that's going straight to the schools, and that I know they're planning on doing some HVAC work. A lot of the other items in this category don't seem to do much for us. There is a section on supporting local health and safety workforce, but I don't know that we can really tap that very well. The key in all of this, and the document online is a little bit different than what is presented here, but in all of this, there's a very tight link to the expenses that are eligible to the extent that their services are devoted to mitigating or responding to COVID-19. And there was a much looser link in CARES Act. And there were even for payroll, which comes later. It was extremely loose, and to the extent that CARES Act said, "For administrative convenience, public safety and public health payroll is considered that it is directly related to COVID," and now the wording has completely shifted away to say that that's not the case.
Why do you think that is?
The feds probably, and the lawmakers probably saw how CARES Act was being used and wanted to direct this funding to make sure it was spent before 2026. Some of the other wording as you go through this, even with the provision we'll get to for the, to fill in for lost revenue, you can't just take that money and claim it as lost revenue and put it in the bank for your rainy day fund. You have to use it. Now, you can use it on a much broader set of purposes that aren't the three capital items that are allowed, the broadband and the water sewer, but you still have to use it. So they want to make sure these dollars are funneled to the localities and then pushed out and spent out something. And I think it's partially because it's intended to be some sort of stimulus, whereas some of the CARES Act money may not have actually got spent out right away. They'll go to the fund balance and be available for the board for rainy day or something like that.
Now, this Support Health, Local Health and Safety Workforce, can we, can we use this to pay for our paid personnel in Chester Gap?
So, and I'm not sure if this category is a slightly different one, we would have to draw that clear line that they're there because of COVID-19, and that they're providing services because of COVID-19. I don't know how tightly that will be scrutinized at the end of the day. So if given a choice of using this, we'll just call it ARPA money because the other acronym has too many consonants.
So you don't want to say sizzle frif for months and months?
I wouldn't sizzle.
If there, if the board is of a mind to fund that, it's probably a lot easier to do that and defend it later by using your, the funding that was freed up from CARES Act, rather than try to make sure you can draw the line from those expenditures through COVID-19 to make sure at the end of the day you can approve that report. That's, that's just my thought. That doesn't mean that as we move along, the guidelines for CARES changed a fair amount over time, and that the wording that allowed the public safety payroll, that wasn't in any of the original guidance or frequently asked questions. That came later. So it's possible that things will shift between the interim final rule and the eventual final rule, but right now, it would, we'd have to say that it is directly related to COVID-19.
Just having been, I mean, we were all part of all of those emails when Chester Gap asked for aid help, and I think there could be, I think there's a very strong case to be made that it is, it was definitely a COVID emergency that required the hiring of these people.
So prospectively, it gets harder, and as we move through time, through 2024 or 2026, the further away from, and we don't, of course, have any idea what's going to happen with the pandemic.
Right.
But we would have, whatever time period that the funding would be used for, whether it's the current fiscal year or next fiscal year, that's when we would have to show that connection, not the reason we started doing, but the reason it's eligible when we pay those dollars. And I hope that it gets extremely hard for us to draw the connection to pandemic, which would mean the pandemic is not very influential on our day-to-day lives, but, so that, I think that's, that's a bit of a concern.
We have a situation where this money can be used for broadband, it can be used for individual assistance, like food assistance, rent, mortgage, or utility assistance, all kinds of things, internet access or digital literacy, that's basically redundant what I said for broadband. We've got a lot of people that have taken their kids out of the public school system because of fear of COVID or the mandate for the mask. I think there's something that maybe we should be able to do for those families that are adversely affected in that way.
Yeah, I think, I think if it was providing assistance to connect for some of those reasons, I think we can find a path there. It's clear if the reason why they need to connect is because of the pandemic, I think we can, can probably make that connection. We can devise any number of programs and then try to analyze them and see how they, how we can fit them into different portions of the rule. If there are certain programs that the board thinks would be beneficial to the community, either we can fit them into this funding or find a different bucket of money where, that it may be eligible for, or maybe some of the school ESER III funding, which I'm not as familiar with, maybe it could be used. Or some of the other sources, and to that extent, identifying those programs would be first, and then we can see, how can we fund those without actually doing it with the local tax dollars? The second big category is address negative economic impacts, and this is what Mr. Frazier just brought up. For some of our citizens, this is maybe acutely needed. For our business community, based on our tax receipts, it doesn't seem like there's still a need for investment of public dollars into business. I don't know. I'm not a business owner, but looking at the meals and lodging tax receipts that are coming in, the sales tax receipts that are coming in, they're very, very high. Doesn't mean that you can't do this. It is an opportunity, but there may be other places that it's wiser to invest. That does include some opportunities throughout the document to, it broadens the eligibility if you have a qualified census tract. We don't have any of those. Those are more disadvantaged census tracts, and if we had those, then it's easier just to plow money into some of the services there, but that doesn't apply to us. So if you see that QCT or Qualified Census Tract language, it doesn't, doesn't apply to our community. This is the area, the small business and nonprofit support, that I'm still not fully clear on. This is basically the area that, of CARES that was used to fund the volunteer fire and rescue companies. And it was, as they talk about here, loans or grants to mitigate financial hardships such as decline in revenue or impacts of periods of business closure, for example, supporting payroll, et cetera, et cetera. So for the CARES Act, there was a business interruption that was, we were allowed to fund businesses due to, or for nonprofits due to business interruption. And for the fire and rescue companies who were unable to hold certain fundraisers, it was deemed to be business interruption. They couldn't hold their fundraisers as normal, can't have bingo because everybody's gathered together and the state wouldn't allow you. And so from a business interruption perspective, the board was able to fund that lost revenue. So this is, is an area that we can look at, but it does need, we need to make sure it is clearly linked to COVID, and there, there should be opportunities to do a similar thing with this ARPA money. Again, knowing, recognizing this is a long period that this funding will be available for, and that link will have to be valid for the entire period. So providing funding to a fire company for revenue in 2026 may not make sense, but you can roll back a little bit in time, I think to March, and it may be appropriate for this period, and those companies, some of them have already shared some information, but if the board wanted to seek detailed information of net revenue from pre-pandemic to current period, and they can show you what their revenue and their expenses were, we probably could fund that with this program. And all of this, yeah, don't, there's no guarantees, and we would want to really look through the details. This is obviously a summary of what is in the interim final rule, and then eventually, again, the final rule is going to change.
I know we've heard from the public school system about the opportunities that there are for them with the ESER grants and things that you mentioned and that Dr. Grimsley's talked to us about. We also have a number of private schools in the county, and, and I know Dr. Grimsley a lot of time will work hand in glove with those institutions as well. Do you know if, if there's a lot of opportunity for private schools right now, or is this something we should look at too?
The, I know that the earlier CRF funding that the schools received, a portion had to go to the private schools. I don't know how the ESER funding is broken out and whether that's the same. That's a question I can engage Dr. Grimsley on.
That'd be great, and just to hear from her about this, how we would expend this money, if she has any input, I think that would be very valuable.
My general understanding has been that the private schools enrollment has been robust because of the, people wanted to have a change of opportunity compared to the government-run school, and so the revenues are pretty good for some of these private schools. So then it may not be all private schools.
I think maybe I misarticulated, or I wasn't strong enough in what I said, though, but I think we're missing a set, a large segment of our citizens if we don't look at homeschoolers, because they, for whatever reason, have pulled their children out of the public school system, and they are bearing the brunt of the expense of that, and these are monies that appears to me that, that can go to, to help them.
That's a really good point.
Dr. Grimsley knows the homeschool children as well, right? Yeah, they should have all those numbers.
Well, there's two sets of homeschoolers. Homeschool, and then there, after, if there are any, there would be those with religious exemption.
I think, sorry.
Those general categories of food assistance, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, counseling, and legal aid, cash assistance, I think as long as there's an equal opportunity in a program, I don't see any reason why the board couldn't develop some sort of program like that. We may have, we'd have to think about how that's administered, and we may have to partner with the Regional Planning Commission or something like that. Again, the county handing dollars to citizens or businesses, it's generally not the way the Code of Virginia is set up. But if, I think a program could be developed, and you would want it objective, as objective as you can, and if there are people in need, then, you know, these millions of dollars should help those people in need.
Yeah, I think what did Culpeper do? I think they did $600 for eligible families with CARES Act. I want to say that's what they ended up with.
Yeah, and Ms. Smith's point about private schools, I, I can tell you what I do know about Wakefield Country Day School. I was, I was on the board there some time ago, and their revenue, or of, I would say disproportionate amount of revenue, was tied to overseas students, and with the, with the pandemic, that, that revenue stream, which is really critical to a small institution like that, has been effectively cut off. So you're right, Mr. Curry, that these public schools, to some extent, have been booming because parents have been pulling their children out of public schools in some cases, but that, I know that, I know that that, that school in particular, the way they had structured their reliance on, on foreign students has really left them, I think, still in a tough position, so I'm glad Ms. Smith highlighted private institutions as part of this discussion.
Right, and so just like a fire and rescue, this section about loans and grants, the part that puts me in a little bit of concern is that it's to mitigate financial hardship.
Yep.
So how closely will a body be looking to see if fire company, fire rescue companies in financial hardship because they didn't get their X dollars revenue last year?
Yep.
And I don't know the answer to that. And the words, the detailed information in ultimately the Code of Federal Regulations may, you know, get into the nth degree of detail, whereas this summary doesn't give it justice, but it's just, there's always strings attached.
I'm sorry, no, you go.
I would, I would just say that I continue to think whether we pay for it out of this bucket of money, or if we pay for it through recycled, sanitized, laundered, whatever word you want to use.
Let's not use the word laundered.
I know, laundered is the least savory of those words. CARES Act money that, you know, we certainly do need to look at ways to, to bolster our fire and rescue companies that have experienced a loss of revenue, whether it's from the cancellation of the fireworks, or no bingo, or no carnival, I mean, these are all things that they rely on for revenue on an annual basis, and it's been a tough hit for two years in a row.
So, interesting in the documentation, you can provide premium pay for essential workers. You can only provide premium pay to essential workers that are in a certain salary class. I haven't dug into this enough to know whether it would be useful. As the board's aware, the General Assembly just authorized $3,000 for each sworn law enforcement officer, which puts you back in the same spot you were last year, where you have a handful of sworn officers and a handful of non-sworn officers, and so you have the situation of haves and have-nots, and this might be an area where we, some of the, some dollars could be used to provide bonuses to all officers, but then, given the amount of money, it's probably $20,000, it, it may not be worth going through the hurdles to, to make it fit into this premium pay when you have those other funds available or choose not to do it. But those, just got a documentation from the state today, looks like we'll be getting $25,000 for those bonuses for our sworn law enforcement officers sometime in FY '22. They're not sure.
It's about eight.
Right.
But the problem is, has been not very hard to figure it out, not one of our county employees of any staff has lost one day's work on account of COVID, and yet we have the taxpayers, this is taxpayers' money, we're taking taxpayers' money and paying people a premium for having a job that they didn't lose any time from, and the taxpayers, a lot of them lost time during the same time period, so.
I don't advocate any premium pays to county staff.
It was tough when it was $500. Now it's $3,000. We're talking 3,000 times.
And that's using the state's portion of ARPA dollars that they got rather than our ARPA dollars, so presumably if they can do it, we can do it, right? It's all ARPA dollars, but I don't know what the, how the board's going to. But I don't know what the, how the board's going to want to handle that. You're going to have to have a public hearing again because it's a bonus, and you have to do that. And, but the General Assembly felt like they were doing a good thing.
That's political, because they've been bad-mouthing, trash-talking for two or three years now, law enforcement agencies. So it's all political. So they, they take free money, if you will, and they try to make up for all the trash talk that they did for two years or more.
I'll, I'll let, I'll let you guess why they did what they did.
Is there, and did we have any process, can we write letters or appeal in any way the way those monies need to be spent? Or is it a done deal?
Probably not. And that, that reconvene session's open and closed, and it's done. And the governor, you could appeal to the governor to, you know, try to change it before he approves it. But some of that was his idea to start with, so I don't think that's going to get much traction. Just be glad you're not Fairfax County.
Well, Fairfax County, their police department wouldn't be state-supported.
Well, they probably, they still have sheriffs who,
Yeah, the sheriffs.
civil process and everything, and they probably have more sheriffs than we have. I know they have more employees than we have citizens, so.
Right.
Uh, but you're right. The next large category is payroll expenses for public health and safety employees. This is what I was noting before, and I don't know if the, if you look at the online document, there's actually a comparison between the ARPA guidance and the CARES Act guidance. And the, the big distinction between the two, it has to be related to COVID-19 for ARPA. And that's just a lot more difficult for our organization.
Yeah.
Whereas you can see the CARES Act language, which gave broad discretion, and just out of that administrative convenience, unless the chief executive stated that it wasn't directly related, then it was. That was pretty easy for the chief executive to not say that. So I, I don't advocate trying to use any of these dollars for that. If, at, at a point in time, we have paid EMS providers, and there's clear time dedicated toward some sort of COVID something, then that might be. But that would be very, probably small dollars to make that happen, and you've already budgeted for it. This is the, the number five, replace public sector revenue loss. This is a huge change from CARES Act, which was a full-on prohibition. You cannot use CARES Act money to replace revenue loss. You receive less, fewer taxes, so you could just take the money and put it in your bank. Well, the Congress heard that and included this opportunity to replace public sector revenue losses. I noted earlier, it's a little complicated. They have this nifty little chart down here. And rather than using your real revenue, what you can do is you go back before the, the pandemic. You escalate out your revenue at 4.1% per year, and then you measure what you really get compared to that 4.1% would have brought you. And after you do that, you find out that sliver that maybe you, you could have gotten if you grew it at 4.1%, which I don't think we do. And after you do all that, then you are allowed to use those dollars for, for a broader category of things. So it, it's not as good as I thought it might originally be, where it was like the public safety payroll with, if you can just show you didn't have the revenue growth, you could take the money, put it in the bank, and use it later for whatever project you want to. You still have to use it within the time period, and obligate it before December 2024 and spend it before 2026. But you can spend it on a broader list of government services. So that can be pretty much any sort of capital or need that you have. So if we're doing a capital project, it may be worth the effort to run the analysis and determine what this lost revenue number, amount is. Hopefully, they'll adjust the guidance to align with the fiscal year for the community. And if they do that, it'll be pretty simple for us to run the numbers.
Yeah.
And then we'll know. There's, you know, $600,000 or whatever number that is eligible for us to apply to a broader set of, of uses rather than the constrained set of uses.
So you're saying that this, this potentially serve, potentially serves the fungibility of money tool that public safety payroll did?
Public safety payroll allowed us to defer the expenditure of those funds to any time in the future for any purpose.
Uh huh.
Whereas this allows us to defer the expenditure to the same period of time, December 20, December 31, 2024, spent by '26, for government services.
So once it gets classified as, as revenue, lost revenue replacement?
You still have to show what you used it for.
But?
But pretty much everything we spend is government services, so it's not.
I got you. But it's the time limit would still.
Time limit is still there.
Yeah, okay. And you don't, I mean, have you done a rough calculation?
I, I look back just generally at what our revenue's grown, and I think there is some revenue there.
Not much.
There's a lot of, I noted that there's a lot of comments on aligning that timing with the fiscal, our fiscal year rather than December 31st. There are also a lot of comments at what's included in the revenue that you use in the base year. So things that aren't included are like CARES Act.
Yeah.
Federal dollars that are coming in. But we have a lot of revenue in our budget.
Yeah.
For example, we have revenue that comes from the Water and Sewer Authority, paid for the Water and Sewer Authority employees.
Yeah.
Do we count that? I mean, it has really no bearing on the revenue generating capacity of the community, but it's probably not growing at 4.1%. So the more we can put in there that doesn't grow 4.1% is good for us. And the more that we can exclude that does grow faster than 4.1% is good for us.
And sales and meals and lodging tax revenues.
That would all definitely be in.
But even, even the growth there proportionally, it's such a small portion of our overall revenue that I don't think it would, it wouldn't constrain our ability to claim.
I think at the end of the day, you just have to run the numbers. And I'm hoping that they'll change the schedule, so it makes it much easier. Otherwise, we're trying to split fiscal years and what cash comes in when, and it.
What's your understanding of this term counterfactual revenue?
That?
Is a bizarre term.
It is, it is the revenue that you would have if you grew at 4.1%, I think.
I guess that's a short way of saying it, but.
Yeah.
Interesting term.
Yeah, it's a strange term.
The little chart they have here in color, it's not very big on the screen, but that gives the idea. If you grew at that dashed line at 4.1% and your actual revenue was the orange line, the orange bar, then you could claim the green bars as being lost revenue.
Some economists in the federal government came up with that term and really had fun using it.
Yeah.
And how, how could they devise something that would apply to every community in some way that has all different growth rates? And of course, we, here in Rappahannock County, buy design or don't grow.
Yeah.
Right? Whereas a, a fast-growing community, they can use their real growth over time, which may be more than 4.1%.
Yeah.
And they can use those numbers, but we can use the default.
Okay.
If the default were higher, it would be better for us.
So how far back can we go with this projection?
I don't recall, but it's, it's all in there.
Okay.
It's, it's very detailed on the process that you have to use. And I suspect and hope that it will change on that, this base, the benchmark times from which you will escalate. It's, you know, the most, most recent full fiscal year prior to the public health emergency, so.
2019.
Yeah. Water and sewer, and so then you have all those constraints. And then it appears you move on to water and sewer infrastructure and broadband, broadband infrastructure. And they just said, spend away.
How about, um, how about, uh, just telecom infrastructure? Specifically, copper and bad switches owned by CenturyLink in Harris-Holloway.
Yeah.
Do they still own them?
That, that, it would probably have to somehow fit under broadband.
Okay. Yeah, everyone's down tonight, by the way. Yeah, no phone service.
It rained.
It did.
It, yeah, it was sunny briefly today. That probably had something to do with it.
So mine's probably got static all over it.
So it is interesting that, the best I understand, the way they handled the water and sewer infrastructure was to basically take current federal programs, clean water projects, the, these revolving loan funds that each state has, and basically said, if you can do a project through that program, you can use this money. Rather than reinvent the wheel on what you can and can't use. And it's pretty broad, and it, it does expand, it extends from, from, my interpretation from studies to actually adding capacity to a water, wastewater treatment plant. It's the full gamut.
But it also not includes something like the Beaver Dam analogs or, I mean, that's.
Well, you say that, and I, you would think, no, but the, the water quality protection are some projects that are allowed in our state revolving loan fund for the water quality program. So I'd give that a maybe.
Well, I, I was, I was becoming quite alarmed at the state of how dry it was until just the last year or two.
Oh, yeah. At the end of this week, we'll probably forget all about that. But that's, that's an area where if we could develop a program that fit within the state program for those revolving loan funds, then it would fit with, these funds would be eligible. That's how I've read it, interpreted it right now. And so we have plenty of state experts who could help us determine those sorts of things because they're making those decisions all the time on the, the local revolving loan fund.
Maybe do that for free, you think?
Maybe, yeah. I mean, that's their job.
Shall we talk?
Yeah, and so maybe here's the time to pause and allow, I guess, Chair Woodard to.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Come on up to the mic.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sherri Woodard. I was elected on Thursday evening, I guess, and on Wednesday, prior, you came up with this special meeting. So I was still just gathering information when I heard this morning, hey, there's an opportunity for some funding. And I felt for a long time, as I've watched money, from what my perception is being given away, and the authority really is in need of funds, and we don't want to always raise the rates to get the funds so that we can do the research. I've been a big proponent on the board for the fact that we need professional help. And we've hired Racy Engineering out of Luray. They seem very compatible. They work with a lot of small systems. I feel like the people in Luray can be trusted. It's just a difference. Before that, we had hired a very large firm, spent $30,000, and everybody ended up being very disappointed in the whole experience. And I've met with the owner, Mr. Racy, and Gary Shirley is our main contact. And they just seem smart. They know how to look at sewer systems, and they understand smaller companies. They work with big companies too. So the problem has been, we don't have the funds to hire them. And they're, I think their rates are reasonable, and I did get a quote today. I had time to do that. So what, what I'd like to ask for tonight is for the sewer, Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority, be, I'm not sure of the process, but what we'd like to do is work on the I and I problem that we have. The rain's a good example. When it really rains, there's too much water coming in. And that's I and I is the inflow and infiltration. And otherwise, the system works pretty well. And then we have these big rain events, and then there's a problem. We've identified that some of the homes have sump pumps that are draining into the system, and they shouldn't be. So that's one of the first areas we want to attend to. So the, the quote from Racy that I got in today talks about sump pumps. Very simple thing, but it's going to cost to go onsite visits, note-taking, and looking. We've identified 16 sites. We have just about 200 members, owners, in, in the, in the authority. So we've identified that 16 of them have sump pump issues. So for Racy to come and look at that is 3,000. And then there's a written prescription for piping, because then we've got to move the sump pumps and have it piped somewhere else. That's a quote of 5,600. And then there may be additional drainage work. We'll need VDOT permits possibly, et cetera. It can always cost more than you think. So their budget figure that they gave us today was $10,000 for site-scoping prescriptions and designs. And then they said, after the initial site-scoping, the number can be refined according to what we found. So I feel like we fit perfectly into this category that I've read about and that you're reading about now. So I'd certainly like more than 10,000 because I know we're going to find problems. So I'd like to ask for 20,000 tonight, just to get the ball rolling here. We have many projects lined up. And of course, one of the big ones is what's the capacity of the authority? And we, as I said to the board, all of us there, except for Pamela, who's very good, but she's one person, nobody really has the kind of sewer background that we need. So we have to hire some experts. And in looking around, Racy seems like the best solution for us at this point.
The three numbers you put out, maybe I misunderstood, might add up to 18,600? Or was one of them already included?
No, the budget for the note, it was 3,000, then 5,600, and then sort of an oddball, we don't know what it'll cost. So they gave us a bid of approximately 10,000.
Oh, 10,000.
10,000. And then I said, but you know, it always costs more. Plus, we have a lot of other projects that we'd like to get help on. And they're not like $50,000 projects. They're like $3,200. But they, we don't have the money without raising the rates to start bringing in the expert help that I feel we need.
How about, have you thought about, have you thought about doing a survey of the entire system to look at all the, the electrical connections to, to the pumps and?
I, I think that there's a really good chance, so let me just back up a minute. Because I'm a Realtor, and sewers, septic has become a huge issue since I started in 2002. So I go to all the septic inspections for my sales, and I've learned a lot. Med, has been, Med Carter's been really helpful, and I've just learned a lot from the different vendors we work with. And what I continually see is the concrete wears out. So there's really maybe nothing wrong with the system, but the distribution box is deteriorated. It's falling apart, or sometimes the septic tank. So as I'm doing all this work for residential properties, I begin to wonder, well, what's going on under our roads? I mean, things deteriorate, and now they use different, like, certain plastics. Where before, they used cast iron. When we find cast iron, it is always, if it's any age, which it usually is, 20 or 30 years old, it's shot, it's no longer working. So to your point, we don't have a bid in hand for that. But I do think it'd be really crucial for us to start to understand and replace where needed, the pipes, the tanks, you know, that's, that's, that's how you keep your system going.
And for the public's benefit, it's a hybrid system in that you, you, you have basically homeowner's septic tanks as sort of the first step from, from the house going out to the collection system. And, and then from there, you're taking gray water into your system. So it's really, it's a somewhat unusual, but also very, I guess, a handy way to have used septic tanks. So that really is an Achilles' heel for your system, right? Because a lot of these houses have been there forever.
Right.
And you don't really have knowledge, like you said, of what's under the ground.
If, if we could have like an infrared, and we could go identify everything, and maybe there is such a product. maybe there is such a product, I don't know about it. But that's what I feel like we need. Otherwise, your system will deteriorate and deteriorate. So I don't have a bid for that. I mean, I'd like to ask for a hundred thousand dollars, but I'm not gonna, I don't have any paperwork to sustain it.
Authority has, uh, undertaken a tank inspection program, and they're on a cycle where they're trying to get through a number every year. And there are, you know, items that are not visible. The one question that I have asked myself and I haven't managed to find an answer, and I'm sure you can do it, but I just haven't found it, is this funding was provided to the county, and can we give it to another public body for an eligible expense? And I, I have to think the answer is yes. I just wanted to make sure that we find that the answer is yes.
Right, right.
Um, whereas obviously in CARES Act, we were compelled to give it to the town. Town has their own bucket for ARPA.
ARPA, yeah.
Uh, it would seem that we can, uh, particularly a situation with authority that's created by the board. But we would want to make certain.
Okay.
I, I have a few other questions along that way. Are you ready for questions?
Yeah, unless, yeah, that, I'm finished with what I wanted to present.
When you talk about the sump pumps pumping into the system, it sounds like you're talking about homeowner-owned systems. So you're wanting public dollars to work on individual homeowners?
To get the problem solved.
Okay.
And identified. And it doesn't mean we'll pay to do it, but most of our homeowners won't have the funds. Well, we don't, I, to be honest, Ron, I don't know what the cost would be to switch, but I know Christine will be able to tell you that many of our people on the system, they, you know, they're, they're paying their EDUs faithfully every month, but they don't have the funds to say, okay, now my sump pump has to be moved and go somewhere else. And so that, that would be, we'd want the aid to be there if we needed it. And I'm guessing we'll need it.
And if the authority could eliminate inflow from, from that, then they could reduce these issues of overflow.
Make sure that that's what I understood. And then this amount of money that you're asking for, the authority has already voted to ask for this?
No.
So you're...
I'm acting as the chair based on that I heard tonight was the night to present. And...
But you don't, you're not authorized by the Water and Sewer Authority to actually make this...
I think I'm authorized as chair to do what's best for, and we've been talking about this, Ron.
I'm afraid we keep running into that same problem with this body. I don't think you actually are authorized to do that.
Well, I, I have to say Sherri reached out earlier today to me to ask if, if she or maybe Alex should come present tonight. And I, I tried to accurately depict, I thought tonight would be a very preliminary discussion.
It's preliminary, but...
Because we haven't reached out to all the people that could possibly benefit from this.
My, my...
Also had buy-in in the CARES process as well.
My feeling is that the authority has missed the boat on getting any funds when they were available. And I'm not sure how or why that happened, but, um, I wanted to make sure I got our voice in.
Well, I appreciate that, but I think what you, at this point now, I'm speaking for myself, but I would, I think I'm, I'm, I'm right here, is that I think now that you've made, you've kind of broke the ice in the situation, I think you need to go back, and your board has to do two things. You have to first firm up the amount of monies that you're ac- actually going to need, and then someone yourself, probably since you're the chair now, is to be authorized by that body to speak about, uh, asking for those...
That, that would be easy. We're meeting next week. So we'll put that on the agenda to get that done.
I think that would be the proper way.
Okay.
To make the formal request, I'll say, I think tonight is great to hear about it. I know that there's a lot of things going on at the authority, that there are a lot of needs, and that this infiltration and, uh, inflow is an institutional problem that's been going on for a long time. And, um, if it could relieve some of the burden on the system, uh, from when heavy rate events happen, um, make for a more durable system, I think it would be a really good use of this money. I think honestly, we have until the end of twenty twenty-six to expend these funds. Um, I think others, you know, information gathering and small fixes we could do to the system.
Yep.
Um, on a, on an annual basis would be a long-term, great expense, um, that we could use these monies for. Um, is it, it is, it is a definite need that almost two hundred homes rely on and businesses. Um, and like, we don't, we don't, like Sherri said, we don't want it to be a burden on the homeowners or, or small businesses.
I do think, I mean, I think you should think, in my opinion, you should think big here. Um, we were just talking before the meeting about the equalization tank that collapsed during, during a big water event. And, uh, I mean, fortunately, the board at that time managed to find a way to get that fixed for twenty-five thousand dollars instead of the replacement cost of a quarter of a million dollars. So I think you all would be well-served to kind of start at the river, go into your plant, including the, the ultraviolet, uh, filters and everything, and just think about what needs to be upgraded. And, you know, obviously, the, we're going to be hearing from a lot of interested parties on how this ARPA money is going to be spread around. But I'm, I'm with Ms. Smith. I mean, it's a huge opportunity to fix a critical piece of county infrastructure. Um, and I don't know that this opportunity will come along again, so...
That's why I'm here tonight.
And when I hear twenty thousand dollars, I'm thinking, well, okay, I mean, that's, that's a start. But, um, I mean, I've been around that plant enough to know that there's probably more that can be done. And, um, I had two, uh, I think I had two questions. One, or a suggestion, I guess, is, um, we've heard from Dr. Bolt at the schools about the, the systems there that, for which you all have a contract, right? So I don't know if it would be school ARPA money or would be potentially county, county ARPA money, but I would also talk, be in discussions with the school.
That's a good idea, actually, you know.
And figure, and include that as part of, and, you know, whether or not, again, it, it becomes a school-driven project or through you all. I mean, those, those systems really have to be examined because the word to us so far has been that they're kind of at the end of their useful life in their current form. I'm sorry?
How old is the plant?
This, this plant's what, uh, eighty, it's over, we used to say it's over thirty years old.
Over thirty years.
So much for just at the end of its time.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, for sure.
But I don't know about the school system, but I'm imagining that's the same.
Yeah, so I, I would, I would definitely, um, include the schools in, insert your thinking. And I've now lost track of my other, uh...
Well, to Ron's point, yes, I didn't come here with authority to say for sure we needed this, but all the discussions I know of, we, we need it. However, we are, we do have a special meeting planned for next Thursday that we were going to discuss the commercial EDU situation, but this can get worked into it also. I don't know if we can have answers on all the capital expenses.
Right.
That we'll need by next Thursday, but...
Yeah, this is definitely, it's a journey. Uh, one thing I would say, I would gather that the process would likely be an agreement between the county and the authority, requiring the authority to use the funds in accordance with the restrictions and what's allowed and not allowed, and...
And what I'd like to ask, if Gary could give us that answer, if that's possible within a week or so.
Possibly.
Then that will help us know, hey, let's not wait. If it's not possible, then it's not.
Yeah.
But it sounds like it could be.
I would guess that it is. But it, you know, most localities, even in the CARES Act, when they were passing money to towns or other bodies, they had some detailed agreements. And I think in this case, where we're not compelled to do it, probably want to do that because once, once you get the money, if you spend it on bubble gum, then, uh, we need to have some protection. When the audit comes around, that we're going to go find your CD and claim that money back.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I wasn't privy to all the discussion. I wasn't on the board, but I do remember being out there one night when, uh, the sewer system was trying to get finalized or whatever, and Mr. Estes, who was supervisor for Piedmont District, and he was on the Water and Sewer Authority, I think with Eugene Leggett and Carson Johnson. And don't ask me...
My husband, Martin, was on that initial one, too.
Your father was one of them.
Right, so you probably know even better, but I remember, uh, at, at a meeting, I don't know why I was there, but, uh, the Water and Sewer Authority needed some funds, and Pete was adamant that they pay interest, one percent interest, uh, at, 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 at a minimum, so that they actually paid it back. Because, you know, as long as that interest was on there, they may not be in a hurry to pay it back. So I, I think, you know, there's, things have been done in the past, and I think we can find ways to do something in the future here. So, but I just...
I appreciate your comments, and I think they're good ones. And here, maybe we, we can talk a little bit later about some of what you're thinking.
Yeah, I would also say...
But first, I do want to know if Jerry says this is even possible.
I'll try to do that research. I'll say that we don't know what's coming from the federal government next, but there is the infrastructure, uh, talks that could be another source, uh, for, uh, this sort of infrastructure. And I haven't looked at that portion very clearly. We don't know what will eventually pass if some, I mean, it seems likely that something's going to get signed. Um, and so it's just another billion dollars, so...
Right. Well, I think that's why I felt so, it was so important that I come tonight to present, even if it's just the first effort, to let you know that we don't want to be overlooked, and, and we need help, too.
I think I saw in the paper that, uh, the town was already allocating their ARPA dollars to their system at a recent meeting.
Yeah, I imagine.
How quickly do you need this ten thousand to get the...
Um, well, it'd be good to have it in a timely manner in a couple months, but, um, I know Racy would, if they know the funds are coming, they'll, they won't, you know, if we can't pay them right away, they would still get started.
Is there, in terms of, um, just accounting, if the Sewer Authority jumped, jumped in, um, on the, on the study and funded it from their general fund, could we then, in other words, could we, could we reimburse? Or does it have to, does it have to be us paying an invoice, or...
I would not envision we would be paying an invoice. I would be envisioning some agreement where we're sending a block of money to the authority to do a...
And we just track it and have correct records and reporting so that you guys...
But I think we're, we're trying to move as quickly as possible, um, at least on initial items like this.
Well, if there is a mind to try to, uh, help the authority in a broader sense, then the initial work by Racy would help identify subsequent work. And the sooner the initial work gets done, the more likely you'll learn other investments are needed from this, or you will learn.
Right.
And you might have access directly to, uh, infrastructure bill money that may be through the state revolving loan fund or something like that, that you would go after yourself. But getting the initial work done would maybe bring up several questions.
Yeah, that we could then, the thing is, we're lacking really good information right now. And as I said, we're not professionals on that board. We need expert help, and it costs money to get it. But that's how we're going to keep the system going.
And, and you could develop a, uh, infrastructure committee or something of experts to help get you.
Yeah.
Um, I, I thought of my other question, um, on the equivalent dwelling unit front. And you're about to look at the commercial...
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, the, the discussion for years had been, why, you know, why doesn't the authority use any kind of metering?
Right. We, we hear that a lot.
Yeah, so I guess I'm also curious if a meter system could be implemented during this period of unprecedented funding to kind of take the mystery out of how you're billing your customers.
I, I think that's also very much on our minds, but we feel like the I and I has to be...
As the engineer in the room, I would advise you not to say anything affirmative about that because it's really not at all practical for used water.
They, yeah, they meter the incoming, which we don't have.
Yeah. It's, uh, trying to meter, uh, wastewater is very difficult. And as a matter of fact, we have to do it at the regional jail because there is, um, rainwater use, and it is a big pain.
Okay.
Thank you. But we have, actually, one, one of our members actually said they would fund it for themselves so we could start them as a test case.
Yeah.
But we had, did not come to a full discussion of that.
Yeah, so if you had, if you're supplying water, then it'd be a different story.
Yeah, but we're just, what's leaving.
Since you talked about the sump pumps, when I was working at the beginning of Ashburn Village in Loudoun County, they came in and made all the, uh, they were, heating and air people were dumping the water for condensate lines into the floor drains. Well, that's potentially five gallons a day per tens and twenties and hundreds of thousands of homes dumping into the sewer system that was not being charged for. So we had to then start wiring up an outlet, which became an extra for a while, then it got incorporated into the overall cost. But we were putting an outlet in for a condensate pump to pump the water back out.
Building code now doesn't allow you to condensate, and the building official has been on that for new construction. Of course, there's a lot of not new construction.
Right.
And some pumps, too, you can't pump those.
Right. And we had gotten wind of that, that, that this was, this is part of the problem. But it's, it's a, it's a puzzle.
Well, the floor drain's right there, so it makes sense.
Right. It does, until your, your tank's overflowing, and then it's not...
Yeah, somebody has to pay for that downstream.
Right, right. Any more questions?
Are you enjoying your time as chair so far?
Well, it's really interesting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No, I, it's a good, it's a good group of us.
Yeah, it really is a good group.
It's a good group.
Yeah.
So I'm looking forward to it. And I only came, or my main reason, as I told Christine, nothing ventured, nothing gained. And there's money out there, and they're giving it away, which is an amazing time in our history. That doesn't happen very much. So I sure want to see if the authority can get some...
And the last thing I'll say, and I don't, I can't off the top of my head think of an example of where this might hap, or how this could happen, or what it would involve. But, um, I've been beating the drum of economies of scale and, and consolidation potentially.
The town of Washington?
Town of Washington, and, and having just some kind of county utility that operates both and saves everyone money in the process. Um, I don't know if there are shared projects that would benefit both entities that, you know, with your expert team over in Sperryville, where you guys could lead the charge. But that'd be just another area where I just have an open mind and maybe, um, talk with them and see, see if there are projects of common interest.
I think Christine told me to do that, too.
We're, we're going to talk.
Yeah.
Good.
But...
And talk amongst our respective bodies.
Yeah, I mean, if you could have some redundancy, because we do have one terrific operator, but she's one person.
I know, I know.
And, and things happen. And I guess, um, Washington pays ESS to do all the work, and they've got a bigger pool of people, and it also costs more.
Correct.
So we're not, we, um, you know, Christine and I are on the same mind on that.
Good.
But it seems like we've got some other real immediate problems that we need to deal with.
Training right now with the sump pumps pumping water right into the sewer.
Yes, and it's probably, that's what I'm thinking, I'm thinking. The home will be flooded. Are there any more questions for me?
I know, really.
Thanks so much for having me.
No, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
That's great.
I, I did, um, not to extend this, but, uh, the conversation with the sump pumps leads to you pump it outside, and then it just goes right back into the basement. So that leads to stormwater. Uh, and, um, there is plenty of grade in most of Sperryville to get to the river if you just had an easement or a way to get there. And so it's part of what Racy might look at is the whole, once the water's out of the house, how do you get it to the, to the river? And so that stormwater component is also allowable.
Yeah.
Well, and Gary, you are an expert.
I don't want to go that far. Low expectations.
But you have more knowledge than our average board member, right, of, um, wastewater.
I think this is where it's applicable, that you may know enough to get you in trouble.
Yeah. Thanks a lot, Sherri.
Nearly always falls downhill.
Rain is making me nervous.
Well, no, I mean, you...
It's coming down really hard. It is. Take your time.
Yeah, I think the, it's the chair's responsibility, if I remember correctly, you now have to go through the whole service area and look for flashing red lights on pumps.
Right. Oh, my goodness.
So head that way immediately.
Hopefully you'll have cell coverage to call it in.
Well, I'm enjoying the movie so much, I'm going to stay for a while, just to hear whether...
It's great.
But other things are being given away.
Very well.
This is like a great idea.
It is a strange time. I remember when we were in the ARRA and the shovel-ready project farce, and, um, we've come a long way from, from them.
Yeah.
Uh, so the last main category is broadband infrastructure. And just like the water and sewer, um, if you can meet the hundred, hundred or one hundred twenty with some valid language of, it can grow to one hundred, one hundred, it seems pretty wide open.
Good.
I think we'll probably see a lot of comments on this, uh, through the, relative to the interim final rule. And then I think this area has a great chance of potentially shifting as we move to that final rule of what's allowed and, and a lot of that information. So that may change what the definition of unserved is. So that may change what the definition of unserved is. It may change what target you have to hit, whether it's 100/100 or 120. So I think this is an area we have to keep looking at as the guidance is updated and reissued. It does appear to me, and just like the question before, I want to track that down, that the county would be able to transfer money to another public body, whether that be the Water and Sewer Authority or a broadband authority. But we need to make sure that, that that can happen very plainly and cleanly. I would find it very hard to believe that it is, is not eligible. Uh, but from what I've read, if you can pass those, the 25-3 and the 100/100 or 120, then it's pretty simple. Whereas it's very complicated for those first five categories, really six. Once you get to the infrastructure category, it seems like the Congress just said, this is where we want you to use the money, from a stimulus standpoint, I guess. I don't know. And then those timetables become much more important when you talk about those, these infrastructure items, because obviously there's a longer projects, and you're all of a sudden competing with, you know, billions of dollars of competing investment across the country for materials and for contractors to deploy those materials. And that is the biggest fear that I hear, is that will the, will that community be able to spool up fast enough? Whether it's broadband, or it's a, somebody who does pipe work, or expands wastewater treatment plants, there's going to be a, a major constraint, I believe, on our ability to get that done. And I would guess at the end of the day, that 2024 date, that 2026 date, they're going to push. Because it's going to be impossible to flood all this money into the market, not to mention what the inflation impact is, I mean, it just has to.
Are you sitting with the money?
We have received half of the money, $700,000.
Boy, you're asking.
Well, we, we nicely gave it to Atlantic Union Bank, who I'm sure of loaning it out to all kinds of people in the community right now and getting interest on our money to loan it to somebody else. That's the way the banking system works. It's there. We've received half. We'll receive the other half in May of 2022.
That is really pretty cool.
Um, yeah.
On our promise, it's here.
It's here.
Half of it.
Half of it, yep.
700.
Now, if we don't use it wisely, we have to find it and give it back.
So go, send it to your board.
Yeah, so we don't want to do that.
Right.
And you've had success with CARES funds with your reporting and whatever the state was.
If I were the type to knock on wood, I'd be knocking on wood, because we're not done with that process yet. But we've had a lot of interesting conversations with, the state folks are auditing that money, and their hands are full. Their, their normal, um, normal schedule of work that they have to do is getting pushed out. A treasurer was telling me the other day that her audit is pushed back several months, and it's because the, the whole teams are busy working on the CARES Act audit.
Do you have, do you have sufficient time to handle all of that? Um, I mean, what kind of, what kind of burden is placed on you for reporting and auditing?
Some, and depends on if the board decides to, for example, break this into a thousand mini things, that's going to get more complicated. If you said, I'm going to use it all for this project, then that kind of changes.
That's good to know.
As I think I mentioned at the very beginning, because we receive less than $5 million, and we're smaller than 200,000 people, we have the easiest reporting of any type of locality. So that's good.
Only good to be small.
Yeah.
I know under CARES Act, you know, it's, we had this anomaly with pandemic that visitor ship to the park is actually up, and it's created some challenges along the roadways, particularly in Piedmont District, where it goes down to one lane. Is it one lane in each direction, I should say. We had contemplated your speed is type display installations under the CARES Act money. Is that something that would be eligible under this ARPA? Or, or does it, or do you need to think about it?
You know, again, this is one where we might be ill to draw the line, you know, kind of ping pong along of logic to make it happen. But if it's, if that's a project that the board really wanted to make happen, then I would recommend you just make it happen. And not worry about the, the logic path to make it fit into some neat box inside of ARPA. You know, 1.4 million and 20,000. It's just probably not worth the gymnastics to make yourself comfortable that it's, can be used for that.
Yep.
Well, I still think those are a great idea, and especially in light of the last VDOT study.
As long as they're smaller than that dinormous sign.
Yeah, they, yeah, the ones that I'm talking about are the same size as the speed limit sign.
And I, VDOT has told me that we can permit those under land use permit. We, you know, that's, that's something that you can do if you want to do it now. Not all your constituents, not all your constituents may want to see flashing lights. And the positioning of them relative to residences will have to be carefully planned.
Yes.
Uh, because people, you'd be surprised how bright they probably are at night when.
Oh, well, we'd have to get a trial and see how it looked out here at night. Or they could be turned off overnight.
We'd paint them Yuma Green.
Maybe. I don't think you want to camouflage. Uh, but, you know, that's the sort of project that if the board wants to, you have a contingency fund, and you have CARES money. If you wanted to appropriate money to do that, you just have, as, as a body, you have to decide you want to do it.
Well, I, I can understand why maybe we don't want to pay for it out of these monies, but I still think it's worth doing.
We should do it.
So I'll, I'll work on that and put it on the agenda for September.
And I know there was a, a town up in Falk here that did it not too long ago, and I talked to them at one point in time. I could get the details and just.
The plans?
That would be great.
I can't remember who put them up.
Yeah, there's some in the plans.
Uh, the next section in this NACO document is, is somewhat valuable, and it's ineligible expenses. And I would suggest you read through that. It does have a highlight of some of the things that you can't do. But why focus on things you can't do? No rainy day fund, as we noted before.
So are you going to put out feelers to the folks we asked when we undertook the CARES exercise?
Yeah, so I, what I thought I would do would be to contact those individuals that the board funded previously, or at least those categories business. But I don't know if that is exactly what you want. I know that the fire and rescue companies are of interest. I'm not really sure what other groups you want to reach out and touch. Or do you want to work with press to have, push the message out that the, the board supervisors wants to hear from groups who think that they may have an eligible use of funds? It's hard to educate the public what the eligible uses are, and then, you know, have their, alert them to the potential availability.
Think the press would do that for free?
Well, one of them probably will. And then it's a race, so.
How did we tweet out last time?
I reached out individually to different groups, uh, different, you know, whether it be the fire companies, and then different nonprofits, and then I reached out to the various schools that were. Uh, but some of the questions, like Dr. Grimsley, whether her, some of her funding must go to private schools, those are important questions to ask.
Yeah, we definitely need to.
And then we did the program with the Regional Commission and CIC for the business funding and the nonprofit funding. And I don't know that that's really needed again, but I don't know.
And the other thing I wondered was on the park board, because we, we are having the potter stack, but it's later than previously planned. And if there are needs at the park as well, or a loss of revenue that we, we may be able to find over there.
Yeah, and so we'd have to, I think we missed a year and a half of, of potter stacks. So how do you figure out a half a year of revenue or something?
I don't know, but we could do it.
I don't.
Yeah.
I just, I know, being at the end of the CARES process and having auditors, you know, ask questions, I just would rather be as clean as possible and not say, well, that fits, because if you look at it this way and that way, and then you look at it from this direction, it, it works. It's much easier if you can just say, you know, item seven dash two.
Yeah.
So.
That was the end of them.
Yeah, and that's, that goes into reporting requirements, which I need to focus on, but you don't. And, um, and depending on what spending happens between now and, I think, the end of September, will define the second report that needs to be filed. The first report that I need to file by the end of this month is no money was obligated and no money was spent. So that's the interim report.
Okay.
That makes, that's, that's an easy report. And the bigger localities, they have to do all kinds of demographics and show which type parts of your community receive money, and it's your equitable and all of that. And we don't have to do that. Because we're small.
Cool.
Any other discussion?
I, um, all joking aside, on the telecom question, I'd like to find more, find out more about potential eligibility. CenturyLink told me that they had, but my contact at CenturyLink talked with some engineer to figure out if they could run fiber from the, the, whatever you call it.
CEO.
Yeah, the building here out. And he threw out some crazy number. And because of the lack of return on investment, I don't feel like they are highly motivated. And I do think it is their burden to provide that infrastructure. But if they're going to find a way to weasel out of it, then what, what could we do from these funds potentially to incentivize them to do something? Because tonight, right now, I am texting with the technician, because I call it my group of eight, eight households are without phone service. Two of those households had terminally ill people, who sadly are now deceased, where families couldn't call hospice, couldn't call rescue. Another household had, had to go out to call 911 on a weak cell signal. It's over and over and over and over. So that's one area that I'd like to understand if we could put some money there. I'm sensitive to the fact that it's a limited area of the county. So obviously, I want to hear from my colleagues at some point whether that's an appropriate expenditure, even if it's allowed. And the other thing I would like are, is, are funds for two or three fire hydrants on Piedmont Avenue outside the town of Washington. There were fire hydrants, the, the water lines go down Piedmont. The one fire hydrant, or maybe two disappeared for some reason, were taken out and never replaced. And so it'd be the fire hydrants and then the cost of the wet tap. I understand they have to, it has to be done through a wet tap process. And there's a lot of population density back there.
There's a big water leak back there at one time, and I think one got taken out.
Yeah, so it seems, I mean, I don't know if that is a qualified expenditure. I'm not talking big bucks here.
It probably is from the water, but, you know, that's a utility, so that gets a little bit more.
Okay.
Couldn't town of Washington pay for that?
You think we ought to try and figure out what happened to them so that the new ones wouldn't be taken out if they do go that far?
I think they just, they redid the hydrants, and they didn't reinstall that one. I was at those meetings, and the rationale was that the hoses were breached. There was no longer a need for that hydrant. Which I disagree with vehemently, and thought was really horrible thing to say.
You know, that, that I think we obviously have to coordinate with town.
Yeah, for sure.
Relative to the telecom, you, depending on how this APB thinks that that other body is working on, someone may be running fiber on Harris Hollow, and, and what sort of relationship could happen there where strands of fiber are leased or something like that, and there may be opportunity there if it's already going to be run. I don't know.
The problem with that other group is that they're tied into a situation that's not going to be materialized for a year, year and a half.
Yeah, that's true.
And we, I know Mr. Polster had talked at some point about the option of like a small emergency tower, like a mobile emergency tower.
Yeah, like a site on wheels sort of.
Supervise some cell service back there. It's, I mean, it's been going on for months now. And it really is, is not acceptable.
Don't? But I'm not, I'm not an expert in the technology area, but I, the data would have to get in and out of there somehow, and I'm not sure how that would happen, given it wouldn't have a line of sight for backhaul. So I'm not sure how that would work.
What are you talking about?
If you could put a temporary cell tower up your way somewhere.
Didn't you hear that CenturyLink has sold all their lines, and City was crazy enough to buy?
Yeah, a private equity firm called Apollo. Um, I don't think it's a, I, I think it's a done deal, but I don't think they've taken over yet. And I talked to two techs who said that they, one plan was to replace all their copper with fiber. But who knows whether we would be part of that plan. Uh, before I forget, the other thing I wanted, I did at the volunteer, the, the fire and rescue volunteer picnic on Sunday, I talked informally with two folks from Company One, and they would like, they would like a sewer hookup into the town system, but they're not in the town. So I don't know if we could cover some of that cost. So it's not to put it on them in a down revenue time like now. Just throwing it out there.
The town had a prohibition against extending.
Now, oh, I should mention that members of the town council told me informally that they would be willing to extend sewer over to Company One. So apparently, they are willing to provide sewer service outside of the town. Okay?
Sounds good.
Now on the record.
Anyone else?
If we can help Company One, we should do that.
Yeah. And I think that's not, that's not a big ticket item, but since we're talking infrastructure, sewer, water, let's put it all in the mix.
Good call.
Oh, I had something. Oh, I was going to mention, this is not ARPA related, but the association meeting on Friday evening is in Sperryville, so I was going to attend, if that helps.
Sperryville Fire?
Yes, Sperryville Fire. So if, if I remember correctly, it's Sperryville Fire. So if that helps other folks plan their Friday nights, I'll be here.
Mr. Polster will be there too.
And I won't be, because I've got an obligation, so thank you for going.
And there's a football scrimmage Friday night here between Madison and Rappahannock.
Thank you.
Football team has 20 to 25 players, which is more than they've had.
That's great.
In the game, this game is on. Depending on injuries, hopefully the rest of the season.
Weather, everything is?
Yeah.
You're correct. There's Company Two.
Good. Company Seven might have to be at the game.
Yeah, good point. All right. If there's no further discussion, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Are, are we then decided that we're going to ask Mr. Curry to reach out to possible stakeholders?
I think it worked fine the last time. Why don't we recreate, or not recreate?
I mean, you didn't vote to do that last time, but that was my understanding, what the board wanted to do.
It was a consensus.
I think that makes sense.
I was going to make sure we were all in the same mind.
Yeah.
And Sherry, check the radar. Um, your plant has probably seen a lot of stormwater infiltration right now.
Thanks for stressing around. All right, can I have a motion?
Yes, I moved. Yes, thanks for your service, seriously.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thanks a lot. Those great discussions. Thanks for hanging in there, members of the public.